Welcome, everybody, to the work session, Monday, June twenty-six, nine thirty a.m. I will ask the Secretary of Treasury to call the board, please.
Edward J. Warner, Jr.?
Present.
Ann Walker?
Here.
William Parrish?
Present.
William Pell is present. Scott Hawitz?
I am present.
We're ready to go.
All right, thank you very much for that. We do have a discussion on, trustee Bill Pell has a discussion on with the Cold Spring Pond Trail.
And I don't see the people here, so I'd like to postpone it.
Okay.
Until they show up.
We will postpone it. Okay, so let's get into the general permit applications for determination. First one I have is Kitty Doe LLC, thirty-seven Second Neck Lane in the Village of Quad. I do not see the applicant's agent here. If you want to go over this anyway, James?
Yeah, this is, um, just a name change.
Right.
Uh, this is a modification for, uh, just to change the name to Kitty Doe.
Fine with that. You good?
That's it?
That's it. That's it? Don't worry, I've got some other stuff for you here, don't worry. All right, so that can move on. We actually also have Laura H. McKenzie, six feet at Lane East Quad, owner. There's an owner here to represent that.
She just emailed me saying she can't get on the Zoom link, but there is no Zoom link, so...
There is no Zoom link for work sessions, so you can email her back.
I'll let her know, that's what I'm doing.
Thank you. Thank you. That would explain it.
Which it says right in the email.
Right. So this one we have to do some work on anyway, right? This is one for, uh...
Yeah, they're asking for, uh, more than what you guys recommend.
Right.
The sizes of the floats.
Right, so this one's...
Looks like they're asking for three-six by ten floats.
Right.
Which will exceed three-six by ten.
Right. Right, so we have to do more work on this one anyway. This one's not ready to advance anywhere, so we'll, we'll contact the applicant, and we'll have a conversation. And we'll go from there. Next one is David J. McWilliams, nineteen Schinacock Road East Quad, that's in viral permits. Who's representing today for that?
It's Clay Colby, the representative.
Right. So this one, this, this we had on, and we had a request to, uh, to amend, the elevation was too high. So we wanted the elevation amended to an appropriate elevation. Um, maybe you want to put that up. He wanted eighteen inches, and that was just not, um...
So he brought it down to, uh, I believe, eight inches.
Right.
And just pull the, uh...
Yeah, he, he did another site visit, and took measurements, and did a, did a much better evaluation, as we requested him to do. And that's, that's what the determination was. Is there something else we wanted to...
Uh, the vegetation.
Right.
Which he's replanting salt-tolerant vegetation. As stated in their conservation easement they have, which is actually larger than what we would recommend, so...
Right.
Yeah, and that property's, uh, overtopped on an easterly wood and high tards, so...
I think he's fine with what he's got. The eighteen was quite excess, but what he's got right now is more appropriate for the site, and he did do what was necessary for the salt-tolerant native vegetation. So I think this one's okay to go at this point in time.
Yes, we just need the stamp plan, so...
Right, so, oh, here he is. Clay?
Clay?
Clay, we're working on yours. Nice to see you, Clay. What'd you think, we wouldn't be on time?
We started without you.
So thank you for amending your application down to the, uh...
It's how much room we're working on.
We're working on David McWilliams at nineteen Schinacock Road.
Okay, we, we amended the application. You had asked that it amended, and then, and then you would also ask that I had increased the, uh, the area, the buffer area.
You did.
Okay. The, um, building department has, has a conservation easement on there for twenty feet, which I have a copy of the survey, or file of papers somewhere. But that's on record, and that's been there for a while.
So this would be complimentary, that would be complimentary to what we have as far as our buffers, so...
Yes, yes, it's more than what you have, and that leaves him with about twelve feet of lawn.
Okay.
You know, to put a picnic table or something like that on there.
Yeah, well, that's, that's side of us, so...
Yep.
I think that you've done what the board has asked you to do relative to this. I mean, James, would you concur?
Yeah, you brought it down to eight inches instead of eighteen inches.
Yes, I put it to eight inches, which I think it was, it's, 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 it's a very small amount. Uh, we're not going to put any fill behind it, which was a consideration, I think you had in mind. Um, it's, it's there, it's established, and what will be picked up when he does the new bulkhead will be put back and be replanted, and with the appropriate amount of piece of stone and plants.
Okay. Seems like a very good project.
Back there.
Good.
So you just need the stamp plans.
Right.
Oh, you want stamp plans on that though?
This...
Okay. Once I establish the stamp plans, do we have to come back for a hearing on that, or just, this is a matter of...
No, we'll just have to make the determination that your stamp plans matches what, you know, the proposal is.
It'll be on the work session, but it'll be under the review stamp plan.
Okay. I'm probably going to be out here anyway.
That's, that's your, that's your thing. We just want to make sure that, you know, you're following the protocol.
Okay, we can do that. Thank you. Thank you all.
Trustee Pell?
Bullhead Yacht Club, Jim Walker, come on up. Three sixty-two West Neck, North Sea.
James, approve?
Bulkhead replacement plans. In placement in kind. You have the floor.
All right, I brought, brought my official Bullhead hat. This is a project...
No hats indoors.
Huh?
No hats indoors.
I brought it.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't mean I was going to wear it.
He wears more hats now he's got to put the right one.
Good, you can put it on.
You get nothing for free at Bullhead. It's a working club. We've been trying to get this bulkhead built for years, and it was, uh, supported by plans from Robbie Smith. Robbie Smith has retired. I haven't seen him in a year or so, so he took his sailboat and left. What you need to know is Bullhead has really struggled to come up with the money to do this job. So now we're ready, and we chose a contractor. The contractor is Reeve from the North Fork, somebody I'm not familiar with, but somebody who is willing to put in a precise proposal that Bullhead Yacht Club has accepted. So we are excited to move ahead, and it's a reapproval of the old project, and we would really, uh, like to proceed with the permitting as quickly as possible so we can nail down the contractor for a timeframe and do the job this winter.
That makes sense.
I think that's about it.
Can you, uh, can you update the cover sheet? All the cover sheet says bulkhead replacement.
I knew there was some work to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough.
If you're gonna, if we're redoing the permit from the last one, just put the same description as the permit was, that was approved.
Which I probably have in my office. Say, say it again. What, what do you want me to do?
Uh, just put the exact description of the old permit that you have, if, if nothing's changed. That's the description that the trustees had approved.
Okay.
Uh, right now it just says in place replacement, so it doesn't have any linear feet or anything.
Yeah, I probably wrote as little as possible.
Yeah, if you could just duplicate what we had approved, that would make it easier.
I think it'll be fine.
Because that'll be fine.
So, uh, that's it. You want, you want my other one, one up here?
Hold on one sec. Just given that there's an extensive amount of eelgrass here, is the work going to be done from land or by barge?
It's going to be done from the water.
Okay.
Uh, but, um, probably limited amount of work in the water. Most, most of the bulkhead replacement will be done from upland. But there'll be some work in the water. It's going to be done in the middle of the winter when we can get a contractor there who's not working for somebody else.
You don't want to blow your season.
Yeah.
You don't want to mess up your season, anyway.
Well, we're not going to mess up...
Well, most of the area you're talking about has been previously disturbed and dredged, so there's very little eelgrass in this area, but further out in south...
Actually, it grows pretty good all, the whole, it's all over.
The eelgrass is doing great Bullhead Bay.
Isn't it amazing?
I don't know exactly why, but it's a blessing, and it's a good thing.
Yes.
Uh, even under the floats, even as built. Everywhere, the eelgrass is doing well in Bullhead Bay. It's, it's a promising thing.
I remember that there was a time there, not too many years ago, when there wasn't hardly a sprig of it in there.
Yeah, it's the, it's the opposite now. It, it, when the storm comes and knocks it down, three weeks later, it's back.
It, it grows really well.
Yeah, you can do your next one.
I'll do the exact description.
And I'm also going to push this over to Scott, because I'm a member here, when it comes down.
We're going to enhance that pending the application cover sheet.
I, I would, and then you could put...
And he has stamp plans, so...
Right, and I'll, I'll shepherd it through.
Plus nineteen hundred and fifty dollars to get it stamped. They are Rob Smith's old plans, but they're stamped by John Condon up on the North Fork, and he was, uh, kind enough to stamp them for us. You have everything you need short of a exact, exact description on the, uh...
Right, so just take it off the one that was prior approved, that way there's no...
I got you. And, uh, I'll email it to Mr. Derry.
This is three seventy-three Millstone Brook, North Sea. Bulkhead replacement in place in kind, brown sheet, the final, on top of the hardwood wells per plan approved. You have the floor on this one.
This is another client that I worked for for years and years and years. Robert Liverman has decided to redo his, his bulkhead. Not underneath the house, not underneath the boat house, but everywhere else, he's going to redo it. Navy-style bulkhead at the fixed pier, and the rest is a flush face seawall. I reviewed the, uh, construction details with contractors. We're getting close in terms of, uh, the design, but for Ann, what we did was we, uh, went back to the property owner ahead of time, and he's agreed to ten feet of beach grass behind all the seawall. And at the house, there are shrubs behind the, um, the navy-style bulkhead. So at the house, we're going to have ten feet of shrubs, maritime shrubs, period. So we're not asking for anything else except for old walkways, old bulkheadings, old seawall to be replaced.
New buffer.
Right?
New buffer.
New buffer.
Thank you.
And, uh, Robert Liverman's getting a, a little older, and I think he wants to get this thing fixed. It's eight hundred and forty-seven linear feet. It's big, um, so there's a lot to worry about, but I think we're, um, we have the benefit of a property owner that's...
A good project.
Been there for a while, and it's thirty acres on Bullhead Bay. It's obviously in a sensitive spot, and he's willing to plant the ten feet.
That's good.
So we'll plant shrubs where there's shrubs, and we'll plant beach grass, and Mr. Liverman said his wife won't see the beach grass. It'll be okay.
Okay.
So we're good?
She won't see it from the house.
No.
And she won't, she won't mow it.
I'll go with it. Any improvement over that?
We need a description.
Mowing beach grass isn't, uh, very productive.
Could the, uh, could the permit box description just be...
Yes.
More complete?
Right.
It says as per plans, but it...
Yeah, no, you gotta...
You gotta tune that up a little bit.
Yeah, the character works. Just put it in there and describe it, just like you just said.
Yeah, make, yeah, it matches what's on the plan, because we don't want to just rely on the plans, because people slide things in there.
We also need stamp boxes.
The, I ordered the engineer plans about six months ago. We still don't have them, but the Raider Group is, uh, working on it.
Great.
Those, those will be key, and I don't have them yet, but, uh...
Thank you.
Short of that, we're...
So let us know when you get them.
Making progress. Got to put my hat on now, Bill?
Go ahead.
It's okay? I brought an umbrella in case of rain.
It made you four.
What, you two pick each other? What happened?
You guys, you want to hold or wait for plans?
Uh...
Why do we wait, why do we wait for the plans?
Yeah, well, what's the timeframe, you think?
No big hurry.
Okay, so when you get the plans...
Just let us know.
We're going to have plans. We're going to have plans from the Raider Group. I'm sure they're going to be seawall, flush face for most of it, and at the house, it's going to be navy-style.
Yeah, so, because we wouldn't be able to fully approve it without the stamp plans, anyway, so...
And the cover sheet.
And the cover sheet, so...
We're not in a panic mode there.
So it's okay pending those two things?
Pending those things, so put it as...
We're making progress. When we have engineer plans, we'll be making...
Yeah, we, yeah, then just call James, and then we'll put it on the agenda.
We'll put a cover sheet to it at that point.
Okay, thanks.
That way you have what you need.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Next one I have is Batshill, sixty-one Inlet Road, DKR Shores. My Gina. Applications proposed install a four-by-hundred-seventy fixed dock elevated a minimum of four feet over grade of marshland untreated lumber through flow grade and deck and catwalk should have steps at landward terminate and flip-up aluminum stairs at the seaward termination dock is then less than, than a hundred feet from mean high water. You have the floor.
Regina Rigdon, DKR Shores, here to represent Jillian Batshiller. Okay, so this has gone before the board already. Uh, the dock was proposed in, um, a location more to the west, very, very near the property line, because that's where the client had wanted it originally, even though it was against my recommendation. In the old location, it was, even though it met the ten-foot offset, it was very, very close to the dock next door. Um, so I wasn't comfortable with it, but I said, "I'll submit it and see how it goes." Turned out, it was rejected by the DEC because there was an existing path, and, um, an old covenant, actually, from Conservation Board. Uh, so the DEC said, "We want the dock where the old path was to reduce, reduce disturbance." Which made sense, I suggested that to her at the beginning. Um, so I revised the plans, and they also asked for the catwalk to be lengthened on the landward side to reduce disturbance to, um, any other areas of intertidal or vegetation in general. So I did, so, um, the dock now is, is a whopping, like, it's going to cost her a lot of money, a hundred and seventy feet long, because it was increased on the landward side to the tidal wetland boundary. So, but, all in all, um, the high-water mark, uh, it, it's a very strange, it's, it's not flat, the high-water mark and the low-water mark, kind of go at an angle to the property lines. Um, so it, it seems like it's a lot longer, but, well, it is, because it goes closer to the house, yes. Um, but as far as environmentally, it actually reaches the exact same depth of water that it did when it was on the previous location. Um, it does meet the hundred-foot Blue Book regulation, um, as far as shallow water docks from the high-water mark, so it's less than a hundred feet if you offset the hundred-foot line. Um, so it gets to the same amount of water. It meets the hundred-foot regulation. Um, it's in an area where the path was, um, and currently is right now. It has DEC, Corps of Engineers, and Department of State, they all locate this. Um, and if you actually measure, um, from the high-water mark out, and because the shoreline kind of goes like this, there's two spots that have kind of a inset of the, um, intertidal area. So you could see, like, there's a hole, pretty much. So the original one I had in the hole to the west. This one is in the other hole that's more in the center of the property. So you can see there's like a dip...
Yeah.
For the intertidal area. So I put it in the next best option, which is the one to the west in the center of the property, further away from the other dock, so we don't impede any navigation. I like it in the middle, because there's a boat ramp, um, that's used on the right side. Um, so we don't want to interfere with that either. Uh, so, all in all, the measurement from the high-water, um, mark is actually two feet less seaward than it was in the other area.
Do we request an advisory letter?
I don't know what that means.
Um, just because it is a portion of it in the Conservation Board's area? So we just, just as a matter of courtesy?
I did not request that.
No, 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 we would do that.
So internally...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
I looked at you, but I was looking at James.
We will, we can, we have it, yeah.
Yeah, just...
Okay, yeah, so, um, it's in the area where the path was.
Right, so...
Yeah, no, that's, that's great.
Could we cut it, cut it back the length of it, because this, yeah...
It, it gets to the same amount of water, like, I'm, I don't really...
Yeah, I mean, if you cut it back to the one-point-two, you, you have more water there than instead of where it stops at one-point-one.
Yeah, well, it is at one-point-two. See, there's only the stairs are at one-one. So it is at one-two, which is where it was.
But we can still, we still can bring it back, because you're not really getting, you're not gaining anything. What are you gaining by going out?
There's no appreciable, there's no appreciable water depth.
Yeah, what are you gaining by not walking in the water for another ten feet?
Trustees' regulations say that it should be brought back to twenty-five feet if no appreciable water depth change is made.
Okay.
Uh, but, you know, I don't think you're going to make water at twenty-five feet, but it should be brought back.
Yeah, because you're going backwards.
Yeah.
You're going to, you're going to less water.
Yeah, you're saving the lady some, some money on water.
Let me see, um, if she will go for that. I don't know. Um, maybe I can play with the angle a little more and still be in the area of where the path...
What's the purpose of going that far?
Where you, where you hit the one-two, and you go in another, you know, distance to get to the one-one, what?
Because there's a deep-water area that's actually just seaward of the dock. Um, so there's actually, like, there's sort of a deep water, see, seaward, the one-seven...
Yeah.
To the two-one, so the closer I get to that, the better, um, because you can access the deep water, because there's sort of a channel right there. So if I turn it...
You still have to walk it, so it doesn't matter if you got to walk ten more feet in.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers, it just still doesn't...
What's she going to have? What, what does she want?
Yeah, it doesn't get anywhere.
Boat paddleboards or boat...
Yeah, kayak, paddleboards, viewing, obviously. Um, and if I cut it back, like, you won't even see the sun, like, set. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, that's, that's what she wants. She wants to be able to sit there and watch the sunset, but, I mean...
You actually have deeper water if you bring it back.
But we all want to do that, but we can't really do it, because it's not the environmental right thing to do.
Yeah.
You actually have deeper water if you bring it back and then go to your...
I, I know, I, I...
Do an L.
Do it, I had, that was my original idea, was actually kind of angle it and then go like that.
Because you would acquire, you know...
Because it's, it, James is right, it's deeper off to the east.
Yeah.
And the southeast.
Um, I, I will approach her with that again, um, because that would make more sense to me, too.
You can go with a shorter dock, and you could acquire more water.
And go like that, yeah. That was my original idea, and she hated it, but I will, um, I will tell her. You can hold it over.
Yes, I will.
I will discuss it with her. I could always modify all the other approvals. I think they'll be fine with it, because...
We always like to see you, so...
In half.
We'll hold it over.
Yeah, that does make more sense. Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right.
No problem.
Thanks, Regina.
Have a good day, a good tour and everything.
You, too.
You, too.
And, um, good luck with the, from the, it's been there, done that.
Thank you.
Crutches and crutches.
Not fun. Not fun. Thanks.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Who's up?
All right, me. Alice M. De Grano, uh, Granaro, uh, three-ten East Montarquay, Hampton Bears.
Hello?
Good.
Okay, um, my name is Gabriel from Shepherd Engineering. Um, the last time we were here, we were asked to go back to the survey and adjust, uh, some of the wording and to add Schinacock Beach Road. Um, that was mainly the main thing we got away from them. So I went back, got the surveys, and brought them. Um, but basically, we were just going for the work-done permit. Um, the bulkhead was falling apart, and the homeowner didn't think we needed a, didn't think they needed a permit to repair the bulkhead, because it was a concern. Um, and then we were brought in after the violation was made, kind of to make things right. But basically, the engineer, Mark Shepherd, took the time to go in, looked at it, we made the drawings, and, uh, he pretty much checked out that it's all good. Um, he did want to, he did want to add some natural vegetation to the buffer, uh, for conservation to match indigenous plans, and that was really, that was really the sum of the work.
I do have one question, because it was put in illegally without a permit, and, uh, the bulkhead that was there was actually destroyed, the new bulk was actually destroyed. Now, did you re-engineer the, the, uh, plans as far as taking in consideration that the previous bulkhead was ripped out by a storm, uh, longer shadings and stuff like that?
Uh, when Mark looked it over, he, he said yes. He said that it's, it's up to code, it will be fine.
Okay. No, because that was my concern, because it was, it was there.
Ripped apart, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and you, you've increased the, uh, buffer substantially, so, I mean, I think, and James, we have everything that we asked for, correct, as far as, uh, our list of, uh...
Is this the most recent?
No, the, there should be another one that we brought in, and then on the bottom left corner, it says it's...
Schinacock Beach Road?
Yes.
Because, because I'm not seeing Schinacock Beach Road on the cover sheet either, because you're not seeing it on the survey, right, James?
Correct.
That was the old one.
Where is it?
Do you have it?
Yeah, it's reputed road line right here, see it?
Should it say it on the cover sheet?
Um, yeah, because it, it is on, it is within the boundaries of the Schinacock Beach Road, so the whole entire project.
Is this the same one, or do I not have it?
James, zoom in a little, it's on, it's in...
It's in, like, the bottom left corner, but it's not on this one, though.
The one that I have here, um, it was stamped in, uh, June twelfth. James, when was that one stamped in?
May twenty-fifth.
Oh, this is, then this is the one that would, this is the latest one.
All right, as long as you have it, we can update it on our...
Yeah, update it, um, showing that it's, uh, the project is going to be done on the Schinacock Beach Road.
Yes, that one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one there, correct.
Um, what about the cover sheet? Do you have a cover sheet or states?
It says, you know, replace the existing seventy-five foot by five and a, uh, five and a quarter inch, oh, seventy-five by five and a quarter inch bulkhead with untreated material. Basically, they're going to use vinyl material. Um, just ref, can you have the cover sheet reference that it's going to be within the bounds of the Schinacock Beach Road?
This is an ASBIL, right?
Yes, it's an ASBIL, so...
I have the cover sheet, so?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's listed as an ASBIL, good.
Yeah. I believe they paid the ASBIL fee.
Yeah.
It says it on the top.
Yeah, I see it, yeah, I see it.
We've had this in the office for quite a while, from back and forth. Yeah, just put, have that on the character of work, where it's going, the description where it's going to be placed, okay?
Okay. And then for that, we still have to come back to another hearing?
Um, no, we got...
Do you have stamp plans?
Yeah.
Yes.
Stamp plans, just the change of, uh, on the character of work sheet.
Just the language to clarify.
Yeah. On, on this sheet, correct? I just want, on this sheet. Yeah, on, on this sheet, correct, I just wanna, on this sheet.
On the cover, no, on the cover sheet.
No, on this sheet, oh, on that, okay.
That.
Yep.
Just so in that description of work, if you, um.
And then we just drop it off and then we're squared away?
Yes.
We'll move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, it'll go on to the, the meeting, not the work section of the meeting.
Next.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and is there, is there a date, when's the next date for that?
July seventeen.
July seventeen.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Of course, take good care.
Yeah, let him work.
Yes. Robert Drake, twenty-five Nautilus Drive Hampton Bears.
Represented by the owner.
Yes.
He's not here.
I don't see him here, but, um, well, it's pretty.
Straightforward.
Straightforward, replace the existing bulkhead within, with non-treated lumber throughout the project, include a ten-foot buffer from bulkhead within the installation of, uh, Cape American Beach, grass twelve-inch unset, include a small four-foot, uh, path through the buffer to the bulkhead, include a ten-foot return on the north side of the property, bulkhead to max the elevation of the, of the property to the south, uh, there's more stuff here in this.
More what?
Any pictures?
Yes, I'm gonna give you pictures.
We had, uh, had this on previously, we had requested some.
Yes. It's a right-of-way that goes to Moses Creek, it's actually a reverse way it goes.
Do, is it a covenant or an easement, like, do we have language?
No, it's, uh, they actually own it, it's a right-of-way, it's, they own the property, and we had previously permitted the dock on the property, I don't know, about ten years ago.
Ten years ago.
Okay.
And so he's looking to replace the, uh.
The bulkhead.
Bulkhead, here's a better picture of it here.
All right.
So, yeah.
He's got permits for the dock, yeah, it's shot.
You can see the, the green, that's all he's gonna, so, you know.
So is this the south, where, where?
That's the south and that's the north, and that's the.
Okay.
And it's to match the joint?
Yes.
Okay, and, and a buffer?
Yes.
Yeah.
And a walkway through the buffer.
That's good.
So I think it checks all the boxes, right, James?
I think it does.
Yep.
Now, do they have engineered plans here as far as?
They have, yeah, yep.
Stamp plans, okay, then let's, can we please move it ahead, Dan?
Yes.
All right.
Move it ahead.
Good.
Trustee Walker.
Okay, um, I have open space village of North Haven, this is, so this is the bulkhead on the west side of Gannett Creek, all the way at the top of North Haven, the bulkhead there has been, um, deteriorated, deteriorating for quite some time, and this is to remove and replace the existing deteriorating timber bulkhead with two hundred and thirty-six linear feet of epoxy coated, uh, scintile lever steel sheets, um, sheet piled bulkhead with the addition of a twelve-foot return, the top of the existing bulkhead varies from four to four point five feet, the top of the new bulkhead will be at four point five feet, the buffer area landward of the bulkhead will remain sandy beach with any disturbed natural vegetation to be replanted following construction of the bulkhead. The, um, state of this bulkhead is such that the sand weeping through, or pouring through, um, fills up that channel that, uh, ac, to access, and quite a lot of boats, um, use that channel to get in and out of Gannett Creek, so, I would, if you can see the sand there, you can see that shoal, and that's a result of that bulkhead.
And this was part of your discussions, uh, with the North Haven Association that wants to get the dredging done, uh, I know Ed's had
Yeah.
talks with Army Corps and, I mean, uh, Suffolk County, they won't dredge unless this bulkhead gets, uh, repaired.
Yeah.
Also, last year, I'm not sure about this year, but last year, um, the water quality was so poor in Gannett Creek, I'm sure partially due to this shoaling, that there were shellfish restrictions that were imposed.
Yeah, it's become a, a certification, it's been downgraded.
Yeah.
I, I, oh, I didn't know if you had anything to say.
No, I think it's a good project, I mean, it should have been done a long time ago, it would definitely cut down on the frequency of dredging, uh, of the channel, which, you know, you know, without dredging, the water quality in the creek has gone, you know, uh, south and pre, pretty much in the last couple of years, so.
Yeah, definitely.
I think, um, they've got everything in line now, financing wise, and I think that we should approve this, unless anybody has any concerns or questions.
All right.
No, it should definitely, it should definitely be approved.
No, it's, it's a good project.
Now, you have it as a, uh, application on for this meeting, right, because there was time constraints, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, so it is on for this afternoon to, um, be approved.
Approved. Okay.
Because we have stamp plans.
No, I think we're all good with that, I mean, we.
We didn't have any questions.
No?
So.
Good project, I don't, yep.
So it will move forward to this afternoon. Thank you, okay, um, second, one ninety-two Redwood Road, Sag Harbor, Castello Marine. Um.
Hello.
Morning.
Hi, good.
Chuck, how are you doing? Morning, guys, morning, uh, President, members of board, name's Chuck Hamilton, I'm company.
I'm Jane Castello, Castello Marine.
Nice to see you both, thank you. Do you want to describe the project, or do you want me to?
You could, of course.
It's fine, I'll just do the trick.
I, I can try if you want.
Okay.
Okay, uh, did everybody get an opportunity to re, re, review the report that I had sent in?
No.
No.
Okay.
I have, but.
Thank you.
Should have shared.
Okay, it's, it's, I'm a little wordy, but what I went over the hi, the history of, yeah, I get a little wordy.
Is very thorough, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a small forest.
If you want to take a look at it.
Yeah.
So this is a living shoreline, sorry, I'm sorry, jumping in.
It's okay, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, uh, so, uh, I first got involved in this project, remember Josh Swatch from one eighty-eight, uh, Redwood, uh, Road, he had come in for a re, a return on the southern part of his property, because the property had retreated so much, and I, and I, he came in and said, can you help me, and, and Jane asked me to work with, with her group, and I looked at it and I said, let me see what's going on here, I said, let, let me see what's going on, and then I started looking at it, and there's, there's there's a whole series of analysis I did, but basically, shoreline has retreated dramatically in the last nineteen years there, it's basically, uh, it was, it was, uh, so if you go look at the north, it's bulkheaded, but it's come south, you have the intertidal marsh, high marsh, and then the intertidal marsh and high marsh, and when you actually do the analysis, I started with the nineteen seventy-four tidal wetlands map, and when I looked at that, that, that was my baseline, and then all of a sudden, in the last nineteen years, this particular property retreated thirty-four feet to fifty-two feet, uh, right down the whole shoreline, so when you start looking, I said, what's going on here? And what it was, uh, it was an intertidal marsh there, shoal and mud flood offshore of it, and then an intertidal marsh, the intertidal marsh, kinda like our mother's nature bulkhead, eroded away, so all of a sudden, that's what's left behind, and it's called the high marsh, guess what, that's a spun, it's not a bulkhead, and so when we get that wave attack on that high marsh, it just, it just goes fast, it just goes like, it just goes very dramatic. So, we looked at this, and we said, we've gotta come up with a solution, uh, for this, and I said, this is, this is what we really need, a living shoreline, and I, because the owner, after we had done the Josh Swatch hearing, saying, can you help me, I said, yeah, under one condition, you do it my way, or I'm not gonna work with you, it's that simple, and I said, I see that there's been a, a major loss of tidal wetlands along the shoreline, this is an opportunity for you to help restore the wetlands, we're gonna do some upland work to prevent it from flooding, but the real deal is, I wanna do something that would restore the shoreline that had been lost, and it's gonna continue to be lost, and I'll do something dramatically. So he agreed, he's very, 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 uh, compliant, he said, whatever I gotta do to protect my property, but also to restore the wetland area that had been there, was the way to go, so I said, you know, good, we're gonna do it, so we started looking at, at designs and, and what we can do, and there's a, there's a bunch of, there's, there's a whole variety of different ways to do, uh, living shorelines, and I'm always, Ed will probably tell you, I'm always like the smallest footprint possible, least intrusive thing if you're gonna be working with mother nature, the least, uh, intrusive, and you can kinda see, this is, this is the classic, that's what it'll look like when you see it now, it's a beach, we've lost a tremendous amount of area. So I've looked at a lot of the traditional, and if you know, I, I saw you Zoom last week, if you've been, I've been at the Patchogue, uh, Living Shoreline project, and the Patchogue Living Shoreline is quite different, and that was a, a timber bulkhead that they wanted to, uh, repair, instead of repairing, they were gonna build a rock revetment, so they built a big rock, a rock revetment, and then the upwind area behind it, they're dropping the grading, gonna restore intertidal marsh, high marsh, and some bioswells and things like that, good project, this is different because the damage is already done, we gotta get back to where it was, and that's where I wanna do, is go back to where it was, but you look at a lot of other traditional, uh, living shorelines, they're pretty massive structures, you know, they, uh, what you did, they go on the bottom, do, they'll do a pile of rubble walk, as, as a rubble rock as a foundation, then they'll do capstone kind of on top of that, so you get a pretty substantial structure, uh, and then, and so your footprint is anywhere up to twelve feet, if you look at the, uh, Bill's Patrick, I think it's almost eighteen feet, it's a very big footprint, but it, that's different because they're kinda working the upland back, but I, look, this is a natural environment, I don't wanna do, we don't wanna do too much, uh, work inside that, so when we, we, we did our, so we, and, and then the other thing I looked at, it says, what's the purpose of the rock in a living shoreline? To attenuate wave action. Just attenuate it, not stop, attenuate it, and, and you, as you know, waves are just energy going through the water, so where's that, it's gonna be between high water and low water, that's where it is, so if I go above high water, what's that, to take that, you know, there may be a wave, but the majority of your energy is in that, in that, uh, water cup, so, when we did the design, uh, and, and, and by the way, we, before we came to you, we went to the Sag Harbor waterfront.
Harbor committee.
Harbor committee.
Yeah.
We went to multiple hearings with them, and we came up, and they helped us develop this design, that's, I had, I'm not saying that by here, that's, but they're very good, they gave us a lot of good insight, and gave us some concepts that we hadn't even thought about, so, and the one, uh, in this particular living shoreline, uh.
Chuck, just careful, cause that microphone right there goes right into Charles's ears.
Okay, sorry, Charles, and sorry about your injuries, and I don't wanna say anything, it looks like your neck's.
No. My neck, Chuck. We have no time.
Nobody wants anybody else to be on program.
I got a great, a lot of great one-liners, but I can't go there, but, uh, so when you look at the survey, here's the survey, and if, and when you look at the survey, that's the tile line from nineteen thirty-six, that's kinda where the shoreline was when they did this, so this is in nineteen thirties, and you can see where we're back to, and what's really interesting, you'll see this like Pebble Beach, it's worthless, it's, it's, we're hitting the old lane now, it's just the heavies, you know, the heavy materials are staying there, all the fines are washing out into, into the harbor, and, uh, there's just a, there's a breadth of, uh, high marsh here, but as you go to the, to the south, there's a pretty substantial high marsh there that really needs to be protected, so, so that survey kinda shows what's going on, and there is a little rock, uh, on the southern, uh, property line, and Josh Swatch had rock there, and, and what's neat about looking at those rocks, they kinda, and, and Josh Swatch, his bulkhead, his rock, you'll see, actually protected, there's, there's intertidal marsh still there, a deriding to a bulkhead, but it's a rock that's protecting it, so ob, obviously, rock attenuation does work, and so you go to living shoreline, but my next, uh, document is actually a survey, uh, prior to the new house being built, this is like in the nineteen seventies, I think, there, but anyhow, it, it shows an extensive high marsh, or in, intertidal wetland there, this is the old house before the Druckman.
Well, no, this is one Druckman, we, it was right up, we built that dock.
And the dock, so what's the survey, and what's the date on it?
Twelve, two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve, but see the marsh, that's all here.
Two thousand nine, oh.
Yeah, so then, uh, Angelo survey should be in here, right?
Which survey?
Should be Angelo Sessary survey, that was one we did in May, uh, I mean, that, the last year. But basically, the shoreline is retreated back, when you start looking at this, uh, this plan, it's, uh, it's retreated back, uh, about fifty-two feet in the center, thirty-four feet on the north end. So this project, we're proposing three rock sills, a footprint of five feet, what we're gonna do is different than everybody else, we're just gonna stack stones, we're gonna stack up five feet base, and then just stack it up, and what we're also gonna do, when we stack the stones, we're gonna leave spaces three to four inches up, between the rocks, so allow the water to flow through, when I've looked at some of the other, uh, living shorelines, they're so massive, the water just pours in, the inlets on both sides of them, scourges them out, and makes it very difficult things to grow, so, and this is, with the Sag Harbor group really helped us, and they said, make it permanent, so that's what we did, by leaving those three, four inches gap, the water will kinda go through that.
Go in between.
Yeah, go in between, so that it will go in there, right, and it will still come in, you know, these, you, you still have to have these, you know, these barriers like this, but that, well, the water will continually flow through, so it was a great, great, great concept.
Is it gonna be native stones, uh, rounded, like rounded stones?
Round, where's it coming from?
It'll be coming from Connecticut.
Connecticut, we're gonna get some of the stone from Connecticut.
But it, it's rounded, it's not sharp edges.
No, I think it has to be the sharp edges.
It's gonna be sharp, because then we can stack it properly, so it's gonna kinda look like a wall, I mean, it is gonna look like a wall, if it's, if it's rounded, or, you know, some of, you know, the irregular type of shapes, you're not gonna be able to stack it.
You can't stack marbles, but you can stack building blocks.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it has to be blasted.
You gotta get the flow through, right, so you have to have the proper.
Exactly.
Proper stone.
Yeah, stone.
To get that wave attenuation, and not create that scour around the sides.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah, so.
But the stone also has to lock in, so that's.
Yeah, well, I just wanted that, if the edges are really sharp, if people walk alongside.
Otherwise, it'll just fall apart.
Uh, it's not that sharp, you know, I mean, you hear blasted stone, and you think that, but, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, cause we had, Ed had a job down there, those stones were like, really, like, really sharp.
Yeah, but they were the size of the table, and they were like.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they.
Angled, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't look really, didn't look good after they did the project.
So, so, the, the different part of this, of this wall, too, is a lot of walls, I, I say emergent, they're above, when you look at this wall, I, we stopped at low-high water, right at high water elevation, because you know what, it's not gonna do anything above that, and even, I thought about it from an open space and aesthetic appreciation, I'm driving down the bay on a, on a high tide, I'm not gonna see that wall, I'm gonna see that marsh behind it, intertidal marsh and a high marsh, and then a little dune that we're building, and I think that's a better way to go, because going up another foot and a half, two feet, like some of the other, uh, living shorelines, doesn't come.
Yeah, cause we have one up in West Tampa we're having trouble with, maybe they should have done something like this. Well, you know, it's, I think these living shorelines are, are, are learning experience for all of us.
And they're extremely site-specific as well, this one has practically no fetch.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly, our fetch here is, is twenty-one hundred feet, you know, expected wave action, maybe one to two feet, when you start looking at the stuff on the richest bay, you're getting pretty heavy stuff, so you have to have some mass.
Stones.
And, but it's not just, you know, and again.
But you still wanna get the proper wave attenuation, and not create greater scour, cause you got more energy.
Yeah. Exactly, exactly, so that's, you know, when, so I, I think, we think this design, uh, is a little bit, is a better design for the small footprint, the advantage of it, too, is it, things, let's say we do get a lot of, it, it does become dislodged, we can go back and pretty much straighten it out again.
What, what would be the timeframe of building something like this, how long?
How long would it take to build?
Yeah.
Goodness.
Let me get it up.
Well, the way we're gonna do the construction, we're gonna come in from, from the north, from, uh, from Josh Swatch's property, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna bring in and set the rocks first, you know, come in, uh, on a low tide, come in with a skid steer, set the rocks, and then after that, we'll backfill, uh, the permits are very limited, so it's gonna be skid steer stuff, we're not bringing anything heavy, no bogs or anything like that, it's all gonna be skid steer, it's, you know, small equipment, so, and, you know, we're talking about a, a large area, you know, you gotta get the rock set right, then we're gonna do the grading, uh, get that right, and, and, and then we'll start doing the planting, so, you know, I, it, and again, I just received some word from the, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they've asked for a winter flounder window from January to June first, the concept is to protect the eggs larvae and the juveniles, you know, the juveniles will still use those intertidal flats, those.
Yeah, to go open, yeah.
Yeah, so they wanted to.
You're right about that, something, if there was, if there was flounders.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just gonna put no flounder in here, but that's okay, so, what we did, you know, so where we're gonna do that, so that tells me that, you know, we're gonna probably start a project sometime around June first, it'd probably be in, in, in a summer kinda project, uh, and then the planting will do at the appropriate time, it, I'd like to do it in continuous fashion, you know, you've, again, you know, some of the obvious issues is, is water fowl predation on, on, on the swat on all of the floor, for the plant, some of that, so we're gonna have to really look at that.
That's.
That, in the last fifteen years, has been the major problem in Sag Harbor Cove, it was the, uh, basically, the, they were migratory water fowl, now there's a population of geese, about seventy-five of them, that lived there year-round, they've had a few, uh, sets of offspring, so their population has increased, and they literally, on the north side by Long Beach, they've literally, literally ripped out every single piece of grass, they just ripped it right out, and I watched, I, being a Bayman down, I've watched it retreat over the last twenty years, but in the last ten years, it's, it's, it's got much quicker.
And see, that's, you can't plant it that fast.
No.
No.
That's, so that's, so that's really gonna have to look at some, some sort of barriers, and, you know, obviously, a barrier of that type is like, you know, you, you've seen it kinda when they do the, the aerial stuff, but obviously, they're gonna be coming, we may have to end up thinking about some sort of construction fence or something like that, something.
You put, you put the black mesh over it, because they don't wanna walk over, because that's what I do it, to my customers.
Okay.
Or, or maybe a dog would chase them away, though.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's a great.
Okay, tell Mr. Spiegel he's gotta buy a dog, maybe two dogs, you know?
I have automatic sprinklers.
Oh, okay.
They don't work.
They don't, at my house, it's fine.
I use a dog.
So, so the, so getting back to the.
Yeah, but one thing I like to say about this, which, creating the spaces, it does create habitat, because there's crabs, there's green crabs, fiddler crabs, uh, bank mussels and barnacles, so you're actually recreating a habitat that was, you know, is basically lost here.
Yeah, and, and the neatest thing about this area is the, uh, the fucus, the, uh, species down there, the, the rockweed, I've never seen so much rockweed anywhere in, in my travels, there's so much rockweed growing down, it must be good, clean water down there, but it's really amazing, so, so not only we have, you're right, all those other animals, but we also get some rockweed in here, which is a great, you know, great thing, it's kind of a species, a plant species, you don't see that often, uh, but, so the concept from, from the upland is, again, there's a big, a nice lawn, extensive lawn area, so we're, and, and there had been a buffer in the prior approvals, so we're gonna create a dune back here, and the concept of planting, planting a dune is that it would act as a structure, if it had any upland runoff, it wouldn't be able to get into the, into the harbor, and then number two, uh, with a dune, it might also be potentially, you know, dummy back to, a terrapin habitat for laying their eggs in the backside of a dune, so I'm creating some habitat for turtles, and, and Mr. Spiegel's more than agreed to do that in, in this whole creation, and, uh, he had done some prior plantings, uh, it was all like, you know, upland stuff, non-maritime species, and just completely fail right away, so we're gonna do a hundred percent, you know, beach grass and maritime kinda stuff, and, and get it at elevation, it's not gonna do anything, the other advantage of, of the dune con, concept is, should we have some massive storms and get some erosion, guess what, I'm gonna put some sand out into that little high marsh and in that there, and what's that gonna do, it'll help it in case we do have some erosion, I'll be providing some material, and again, we, we, we're, you know, we're asking the department, I think, everybody, for a five or ten-year permit, for the purpose of, this is, uh, you know, most of our permits are always like permission to construct, this is kinda permission to operate a living shoreline. Maintenance permit. Yeah, exactly, I, this is the kinda stuff that we really need to have permission, we need to work with the regulatory. Yeah, exactly. I, this is the kind of stuff that we really need to have permission, and need to work with the regulatory.
We, we wanna monitor it.
Yeah.
So we can use it as an example for other people.
Yeah, perfect, yes, yeah. And so, so, and I have.
This is one of the better plans we have seen, I have seen.
Thank, thank you, John. You did a great job.
Yes. That's why I said you guys were doing a good job.
And, uh, and then we'll build a high marsh, and then we'll build the intertidal marsh. And being a little bit of a, uh, a little bit of an experiment, we're, we're basically, uh, this is the high marsh that's existing to brown. This is all the dune area we're planting at the right elevation. And then you can see where we're planting, uh, the squat, tiny alternate floor, the, the little dots. But I left this one spot blank here. You know why I left it blank? I wanna see if we can, if Mother Nature, if the marsh itself will actually go in and create it on its own. It's like my little, my little science study here.
The sample.
Yeah, example. We could plant this all here, but I wanna see if this stuff will start moving out in there. What will really happen? 'Cause I could plant it, and then what will we learn? I wanna be able to learn and say, do I have to really plant this thing a hundred percent to get the marsh, or do, or this? And if it doesn't, you know, that's something we can always, if you wanna modify our barning permit, tell me I gotta plant it if it doesn't grow. But I wanted to use as, as a baseline study.
We could always put like, if it doesn't plant within five years, then we have to plant it.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Where you don't have to come back, you know?
So you've spoken to the Harbor Committee. Have you spoken to DEC yet?
Yes, I did, actually, you know. The application's been there for five months, and they've, they don't know where it is right now. So I spoke. So I spoke to Rob Marsh, and I spoke to Sherry Iker, and they're seeking the application right now, okay? And hopefully, they're gonna get back to us. But if not, they're exceeding their, what we call the uniform procedures, which is the timeframe to process an application. Then I have, if they exceed that, then I have the time to request what they call a commissioner's determination. We call it a five-day letter. And if they, if I do a five-day letter, that means I got five days to make that decision. But I'm, we're gonna try to work it out.
There were, when we permitted the first couple of living shorelines, we went and met with DEC, James and I did, with the property owners. And, uh, these are, these are on the north side of Rich's Bay, um, not the south side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they had a team that they were working with. That team has changed now, so, but there is a woman whose first name, I'm struggling.
Stephanie Lawken, or, uh, in central office.
Fort, Fort tonight?
Yes, uh.
Alexa.
Alexa, 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 yeah.
She was the living shoreline specialist at that point.
She's at the division level, and Stephanie's at the regional level, right.
But she, if you can get through to her, she will help you with this, because she's who helped us.
Okay.
And she understands them. So, um, the prior living shorelines, we've done five-year monitoring plans for. Um, you had mentioned ten.
Uh, I have a five-year plan. It's, it's a narrative in this report, I know, it, it's in there, but it, it basically describes the project, describes why we're doing, the benefits of it. And then it also talks about a monitoring plan. And I did a five-year plan, but I wouldn't mind having a ten-year plan, I mean.
You can discuss that with them. I think, you know, five is great.
Okay.
I like, I'd like to see the, um, last conference that I attended, um, on living shorelines, they have now modified the, the staggering to encourage the staggering of the rocks still.
Right, the one rock, right, yeah.
So I'm really happy to see that you're doing that. My question, though, is with the engineering of the rock sills. You said, you basically described that you were going to do like a straight shot of the rock sills, but in your plans, it shows it's more of a pyramid. What is your angle or your ratio of the slope on the rock sill? Because they're still working with this a bit, that's my understanding, but pretty much, it's one to two, from what I understand.
Yeah, one to two is like forty-five degrees. I think we're looking, we're looking at probably thirty-three. We're looking at a one-on-three slope, and I'm just. Well, I, I, and what it is, is I have four feet, three feet, two feet, one, you know? See on that crossbar there?
Put that on the screen.
I would have to measure, but again, it's a stability standpoint that we're trying to do.
Right. Only so that we're clear on that going into this, because there've been some questions, um, about that, the angle or the ratio here. And, and understood that as you're building it, you may need to modify it, but then we just have to have concert conversation.
To, you know, straight up on it, you know, forty-five degrees is a pretty sharp angle, okay? Pretty sharp. And if you think about water hitting a slope, the sharper it is, you know, it's not, the shallower it is, the more absorbent, more, less reflective you're gonna be, so. So I'm not so sure I necessarily agree right up, up front on a forty-five. I think a thirty-three's okay, I mean, it's a more surface area.
I think that's fine, and I completely agree with you, but as, you know, I've been asking this question because.
It's more of a natural shoreline, right? They're trying to create something, yeah, more of a natural shoreline.
Yeah, so.
Wave energy is dispersed.
Just so that you're looking at that.
Sure, we will do that, yeah.
As we're, uh, as we're moving forward with this. The other question is, the distance from the rock sill to, this is not a rock core dune, this is a sand dune.
Two a sand, no rock.
Right, okay.
Don't need it.
So the distance from that is approximately seventy feet. Well, between sixty, fifty-five and seventy, depends on where you look at them.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, so, um, 'cause in conversations, as we're reviewing these already installed prior, uh, permitted projects, one of the questions was, was there enough room allowed between the rock sill and the dune so that there, so that there was room for the, the vegetation to.
To actually, yeah, okay. I, I think when you look, the key part of this design is, I already have a high marsh.
Yep.
And, and then I have this here, and, and we're lucky we have that. And it's not a bad part of the design, think about it. So I'm gonna build this, you know, intertidal marsh, build my sea bulkhead, and then I have my absorbing the floodwaters right here, and then I have my dune. So if I have a storm, my, that high marsh is gonna attenuate the wave action too. So I have, I basically have two structures. I got the rock, I got the intertidal marsh, and I got the high marsh. So we think about designs in the future, maybe we should think, instead of just doing the rock, intertidal marsh, and then, you know, a dune protective structure, or a rock-filled dune, or something like that, maybe we should go back forth and build a little high marsh, which is natural. It's how the natural system is. You have the intertidal marsh going on. So maybe we should do something like that. That, that might be the critical component that we missed on, on some of those early, early on projects, you know?
The natural system really does a good job of wave attenuation.
A hundred percent.
So.
Follow, yeah, follow Mother Nature.
I mean, but you have to take into consideration, each site has a different, a, your different ability to make it longer or shorter. Some properties, like the ones we were working in West Hampton, it's house, pool, dune, literally the bay. So you, you may have twenty-five or thirty feet, or maybe the bay was under the house.
Yeah, so that's, and, and that's, you're right. It's a lot, it's, everything is designed to, nothing is, 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 is generic in nature. Everything is custom-designed. I think that's an absolute, in living shorelines, I think we all have to do that. And maybe some will get more benefits, better, uh, better wetland creations, and others will have less. And that's, but it's better than what we were, we're doing before, which was nothing, okay? Sorry. Just step forward.
Sorry. You had mentioned that you're seeing a fair amount of rockweed, and that you're using that as an indicator of good water quality. But I question the water quality in Sag Harbor Cove, and I think, um, that's part of the whole problem with the marsh here, right? Is this degraded water quality over time has, has really adversely affected.
Productivity and success, 'cause if the plants, the plants start getting stressed, and they're, and they get stressed, then they get weakened, and they do less, yes. So water quality's always an issue, yes.
All right, so where are we? What do you think?
Looks very good.
I like the project.
I think it's, it's been well thought out.
Yeah, I think we can move it ahead.
I would, um, hold off to see if the DEC has any comments, uh, because they like to make changes and.
Right, so I think this was a great.
Should be on the same page, just like all the rest.
Okay, so we can, we can just hold off until the, to get the DEC.
Let's wait till they find your application.
Excuse me, do you have, do you have the Army Corps permit too?
No, but I, I just received the information that, you know, they've pretty much got the review back from, uh, National Marine Fisheries Service, and they wanted certain conditions. So that indicates kind of to me that they're, they're getting close. But again, I know these, well, the agencies do wanna work together and, and have a common design, so.
Yeah, just wanna make sure that the teams have the same.
A hundred percent.
Conditions and everything.
Did the Army Corps have any questions?
No, no questions at all from the Army Corps, and nothing from Department of State to date. And, and it seems like the Department of State and, and the Corps are moving along with the Department. It's okay, we'll, we'll get it straightened out again, and we'll get this moving.
And my other question is the Harbor Committee. You said you had talked to them? Do you have a permit for them?
No, no, multiple meetings, and they're, they're the last one on the block. They, they told us several times they'd like to be the last one on the block, so, uh.
Okay.
But we, at, at multiple meetings, we came up with this design, and based on this design is when I said, now we can go forward, you know?
Not that I have a problem with the dune, but that's, you know, that's well above mean high water, so if you're gonna approve it, just make sure that the, the Army, I mean, the.
Harbor Committee.
Harbor Committee gives a permit or, or it reached to it.
Yeah, you're aware you gotta get all regulatory, regulatory permits, right? You're aware of that.
Yes. I'm learning. I thought it was only one show in town, now I know.
We've, uh, living shorelines, in my opinion, are the way of the future, and we've had a little bit of trouble just kind of rolling them out in some instances. So I just think it's really critically important that we ask as much as we can, and we learn from our mistakes in the past. So I don't think there's fault in asking questions.
No, I, I, I'm, it's a learning process for me, 'cause again, for all those years, we never, we never thought about this. And we did a lot of wetland plantings when I was at the agency, and a lot of them failed. I mean, a lot of them failed. And, and, and it was, and when you go back and look at it, 'cause we didn't monitor people, we didn't hold their feet to the fire, and we just, everybody kind of just looked the other way, and that was the end of the show. This we gotta do right, 'cause this, this is the future. And to me, this product in Sag Harbor is so important, 'cause if this can be a success, it might be the, the program that's necessary to protect the rest of the marshes in this part of Sag Harbor.
Do you think that living shorelines permits and bulkhead removal permits could go hand in hand?
I think that's another time to discuss that.
Let's stay focused on this application.
It's a question, though, to think about, and we've got.
You don't want, you don't want to ask a question right now.
Let's, let's stay on this one application for now, 'cause we got other applications.
We, we, I think we can have a great discussion on it. It's, it's one of those things, you gotta do the pros and cons of everything, and, and, and every site's gonna be different, I think.
Very specific, not the same medicine for all the different ailments.
Only thing I found out, regulatory management, regulatory, regulating people is, is what they have, they don't like to lose, you know? So if they have a great, yeah, and, and so we, we really have to have some good, good decisions and arguments why we're gonna change their shoreline management.
Well, now we're starting to, you know, get into the heart of it, because as you said, people are looking the other way, and you're not solving anything by looking the other way. So now we're, we're going head-on, trying to figure out what's gonna work, to kind of regain some territory here, build the wetland.
Yeah, all getting it all together. But again, if I can do any help, and, and you have any questions, you can always call me, and any, any way.
We will.
We're on hold, you're on hold.
Yeah.
Great conversation, thank you. Good luck finding your application, your presentation.
Tell your mother to sit along.
My mother? Or my mom?
Your mother.
Enjoy it.
Tell your father too, if I tell your mother.
I have your dad, you're good?
Yeah.
Your dad?
Yes, he's hanging in there.
All right, trusty parish.
First on is, uh, David Manuel Mello, one eighty-three South Country Road, Remsenburg, Leon, First Coastal.
Here's Mr. Billy Mack.
Hello, hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Mack, First Coastal. Uh, I liked hearing what they were talking about, that living shoreline encouraged. Uh, this is, um, the application for the dock.
You don't have much on the application description. You say construction, construct new one hundred and sixty-eight foot by four foot catwalk.
Yeah, the site, so we wanted to at least run this by everybody to see what their thoughts were. Um, the plan shows what we're proposing. Um, this is, um, Fish Creek, an area that has a lot of docks around it. Um, we proposed going out forty-three feet from the shoreline to get to point seven, uh, as opposed to the, uh, point three. So that got us, that's the, the one-third ratio in the, in the creek, and I thought that would be the maximum that we could.
How did you figure out the one-third?
Well, just the measurement from the, um.
You don't have a measurement on the.
It's not shown there, but that is, um, I guess we did that internally, so we could show that.
While I was measuring it with Bill, it seems a little off, and I'm, I'm not sure, 'cause it doesn't have a mean high water on the other side, just has a marsh and a mean low water.
Yeah, it's kind of like an average.
Yeah, so I, I would, you were getting what, um, I think it was like thirty-two feet from, for, for the one-third rule. Um, but, you know, I don't, again, we were going off of the marsh. Yeah, we were going off the marsh line, so I don't, I'm not sure where the mean high water line is on that other side. Uh, but it would be one-third from the, from the mean high water, correct? So.
Um, you guys tell me, is it marsh or?
It would be mean high water.
Mean high water, okay. So we can run that again, and see where we are.
And show it on the plans.
And show that on the plans. Yeah, the line is indicating one-third based on marsh.
What's the distance right now?
Can you blow that up a little, James? So we could take a better look at the, uh.
There's no water in there.
It just doesn't look like there's water in there at all.
Yeah.
So.
Point two.
You can actually skip back, the dock back, there's no water.
Well, the next measurement is point three. So, um, you know, that's, looks like it's about ten feet away, if that, maybe, no, it's about five feet away.
You got point six, then you got point two.
No, that's, uh, above.
That's high, yeah, that's plus.
Hmm.
So it's a, it is a tight area.
Oh my gosh.
I can see that. Super tight.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, this spot seems to be out of, uh, the way of the neighboring navigation.
But there's a dock that's just to the north and to the west, so. And there's a boat on it in the, in the picture I'm looking at, so he somehow makes it in and out of there.
Are those docks permitted?
Unknown.
We should check on that.
Yeah, I'll check out those.
I mean, if we were to peel it back, maybe a, a foot or two, would suffice.
So it's the last dock up there.
Yeah, going from point.
Point three to point seven.
Yeah, point three to point seven.
See if it looks interesting down here, or maybe not.
We got nothing from nothing.
Yeah, exactly. It is, I, you know, I call it enough to make a difference.
Point four.
You know, point three is not much, and point seven is a little bit more than not much. But we figured there'd be discussion on this, so happy to, uh, get some input.
Yeah, I mean, it's the last house. Is there any other possible docks inland further than this? I guess.
Yeah, creek's up there, um, so I don't.
Yeah, that's pretty much the only place.
You could add from the, start from the beginning of the interest rate, all over you.
Fish Creek?
Yeah.
This is one where we actually dredged that inlet five years ago. It's still holding quite successfully, and the big problem was the bulkhead was leaking.
Yes, it was.
Same like what you were talking about.
Yep.
So you replaced that bulkhead?
We replaced that bulkhead.
Yeah, I mean, it is in, it's where it steps out a little bit wider there, that would be the most appropriate place of the dock, but there, there is no water in it, yeah.
I don't know, just.
I mean, he's not asking for a floating dock, it's just. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, just take your measurements, get, get your, tighten up on your measurements.
I mean, to explain that the, it's not a hundred and sixty-eight foot catwalk, doesn't, you hell out.
We just need advisory letter. Okay. I'll get, and we'll get more detail in the, in the application.
I mean, the way that dock is, Billy, the way that dock is sided there, I think it's probably the most appropriate place, I mean.
Yeah, it is.
It, it steps to the south a little bit, so it gives you a little bit more room, and.
How long have these people owned this property for?
I don't know that.
I think they, I think, when I first got on, I think they, the property owner supplied for a dock there.
On this property?
Yeah, 'cause that looks really familiar. Way of the header, going back like ten, twelve years ago.
The structure that's on the southern property line.
Mm-hmm.
Who does that belong to? And what is that? Is that two docks?
Yeah, there's a, there's a series of reverse flag lots, so they're not right of ways.
Isn't that one of the losses, they have, uh, issues with the neighbors over there, I remember this.
Yeah. That's why I remembered that.
Mr. Walsh came in, I believe the attorney was here?
He was one of them.
He went, he went for about three years.
And I think that guy, he owns, go back to where the yellow one is. Go, go back to the house. Right behind, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so the property's on the street then? Or just land?
They have their own docks.
Okay.
They're all completely satisfied.
Okay.
So let's, let's stay focused on this here.
No, 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 I was just making clear, I'm not going off in the weeds. I'm just making clear, making sure that we're not permitting two docks on the same property. And then looking at those, I couldn't see that there were right of ways. I'm just making clear, making sure that we're not permitting two docks on the same property, and then looking at those, I couldn't see that they were right of ways.
Fortunately, it is kind of a dead end, so there's not a lot of activity, and that's why we thought this would be the best place to put it, if we made it point seven, and that would be the best.
It could be a real small vessel.
I, I think it's, I know, we talk appreciable water depths, but there's only inches across the whole place, so.
Yeah.
Instead of feet, where we usually do our review, you're looking at inches, so I mean, evidently the dock that's to the east and north of him can acquire a boat in and out of there, so this would be, you know.
Comparable, yeah.
Comparable. And you have an, a, a supposed navigation channel, how wide is that?
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a third.
It's supposed to be a third, exactly, that's why I said you got to take your measurements up.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, how? A third, but I wanna, is it, is it twenty feet wide, is it thirty feet wide?
I could scale it out.
But I, I think that's where you have to show all this, like Trusty Parish pointed out, on, on your plans, that way we know exactly the distance to the shoreline, we know what the third is, and then we show that third as navigation channel on the plans. I think that's what you were requesting?
Yes.
Yeah, but the depth.
Yeah, down on the, on the, uh, plans, you have fifty percent for the open gate deck, I think sixty percent.
This is where it's gonna get really tight here.
Okay.
We just have to make sure it's far.
I don't think you're gonna get a lot of boat traffic there personally, but.
No, you're not.
So.
You're not gonna get a lot of, it's gonna be very small vessels.
Two boats, and I think they could, it, it, it could possibly work.
Maybe a ferry terminal at the end.
About how far is it?
Telepath.
Yeah, whatever.
About how far is it from the southern property line to your proposed structure?
Um.
Just James, approximately.
From where?
The southern property line where the, um, two dock structures are to the proposed structure, like about forty feet, right? Ish? And then how far is it from the proposed structure to the dock to the north on the opposite shoreline? Just to make sure this is sited, so that it allows as much, um.
Looks like it's thirty feet to the north and maybe fifty feet to the south.
Yeah, so it's.
Okay. So it's kind of in the middle, with the two, which is, yeah, that's what it's, just so it's not.
Yeah.
But he's gotta, you gotta, put this, you know, you gotta come back anyway, because you're gonna have to show this all on the plans and really scale it out. You know, that way.
We'll, we'll add more detail.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what you need to do.
Cool.
But you're moving in the right direction.
Yep, all right, I think we should start with that. Thank you.
I think you have another one here while you're sitting there, right?
Okay, all right.
We have, uh, four hundred Dune Road.
You said that one's on.
Right, that one, I was not here last, uh, two weeks ago, Andrew from our office was reviewing that with you guys, and I think we.
Yeah, James and I met with Andrew.
Okay. No, uh, oh yeah. Yeah, I think we came up, I, I think you guys came up with a pretty decent, uh, plan for that.
I think, uh, you put in new plans on, on June twentieth.
Yeah, and those are here, and essentially what that is, is, um, only raising the bulkhead, um, I believe it's.
Ten inches.
Ten inches, and, um, then swapping some of the rock, a half of the rock with vegetation.
Well, the whole, the whole backyard there is rock.
Yeah.
And instead of, uh, maintaining a ten, you know, ten foot, we agreed to a five foot planted buffer.
And then five feet of rock behind that.
Yeah, it's all rock anyway.
Yeah, but if they remove that rock and put lawn in, at least you still have the five foot of rock and the five foot of beach grass, that was the point.
Got it.
Yeah, you could say that you have five, you have the whole thing is rock right now, and there's no fertilization, but if those were there, if they use them wrapped up or anything on the weeds that come through the rock.
Correct.
True, true.
You do have that buffer now, but when we discussed the increased top elevation, there's no bulkhead directly next to this property, uh, but we did take a measurement, um, this bulkhead here, um, to the west, and, uh, they were up about ten inches from, uh, where they are now on that bulkhead, so that's where we got the ten inches from, uh, rather than eighteen.
So there is a bulkhead, cause that's hard to tell from here, there is a bulkhead on the property to the west.
It, it's. But it's far, it skips two, there's.
So there's no bulkhead.
There's rocks, there's a rock revetment in between the two bulkheads. On these, these two properties have rock revetments, and then there's a bulkhead, so we took the measurement off of this bulkhead.
So you're gonna do an elevation of ten inches next to a rock revet?
And there was.
I think that's problematic.
There was a lot of, uh, water coming over on this end, so.
This is already a extremely fragile area. I think to raise the elevation is, uh, asking for trouble, if you look, if you draw back a little bit, James, and look at the marsh, nope, draw back so that you're looking, like, um, zoom out.
So what do you think, Billy Mack? Zoom out.
So that you're looking, because this is, this property is somewhat protected, zoom out just a little bit more, see how it's protected by that marsh, yep, yep.
That sand, that marsh, yeah. Yeah, uh, I, I mean, this is a, um, an eroding shoreline up to about two or three properties away, and then you get the accretion that you're seeing from that point, that sand point that is a marsh sand point, so these properties in the middle actually suffer erosion, when the properties further east, um, benefit from accretion. So it is a, kind of a unique situation, the bulkhead here gets overtoped very frequently, um, that's why I figured the, at least the ten inches will help a little bit, uh, to keep that soil from washing into the bay.
Billy, what's the elevation of the bulkhead at, at the top of the bulkhead from, uh, mean high water, I mean, average high?
I think it's all in the surveys, let me double check. Uh, says three point four.
Three point four above high water, or three point?
Um, three point four N G B D, so that would be, uh, yeah, it is. So high water is, uh, it's around one, so it's just, uh, two and a half feet above one.
So you're looking to go three feet, basically. And what is the rock, elevation of the rock revetment, the adjoining rock revetment?
Right now, that's just a tiny, I think, and I'd, I'd have to reference some of the photos, cause we did not measure that, um. Right now, it, it's either at or a, a little bit higher than this bulkhead.
So the rocks are higher than this, so. Raising up the bulkhead slightly wouldn't really, uh.
Wouldn't, wouldn't impact, but that one little corner, um, is getting a lot of the energy, there you see, yeah, right there.
So you're looking to match the height of the rock, the adjoining rocks then?
Well, we're probably a little bit higher than that, but we're matching the bulkhead, that's two doors down. That is higher by at least, uh, ten inches.
And he's, is he getting overwashed?
He's not getting overwashed as much, he's not losing any soil, I mean, you can see behind this, they're losing soil, and it's washing into the bay.
So the ten inches, that's including the?
Four inch buffer.
Yeah, yeah, that's the overall height.
So you're talking six inches?
Six inches of land.
Which would be almost exactly, well, probably a little less than what the adjoining rocks are.
It's lower than the adjoining rocks, yeah.
And they, I'm, I'll benefit by that, that stuff's not draining into the.
No, not reaching into the bay, that's correct.
You have a permit? Who's per, who gave you permits for this, who else?
Um, D E C, and then we'll leave the village.
You don't have D E C yet, though.
Now, um, as.
You don't have D E C.
Mr. Hamilton alluded to, there seems to be a backlog.
Well, at least backlog is not losing your application.
Cause they have your application.
They have our application, yes, yes, they do.
Why don't we put this on hold and see what the D E C's determination is as far as the elevation?
Yeah, you should, yeah, you could take another look at it.
I mean.
I mean, I like this concept, we, I think it's a, a, a pretty good compromise, um, he is adding vegetation, which is a nice thing, right now it's nothing but rock.
Yeah.
Um, and it, you know, it is saltwater, um, environment there, so the only thing that's growing is native, which is a good thing. And, uh, you know, it's a very low bulkhead now. And what's happening is a lot of that soil is washing into the adjacent areas, and it'd be ideal to keep it contained.
Right, so we'll hold this pending, uh, D E C.
Okay. All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I know there was something on here before, but that was just a name change, I don't think that was.
Yeah, that was, that was.
That's done.
That was.
And I'll be in touch with you about what you reached out to me.
Cool.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's all good, when, whatever, we can do it, but, no, thank you guys very much.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay, of course.
Next is, uh, La Troye, L L C, four eighty-two Dune Road, West Hampton Beach. Anybody here on that?
L I expedite. No? What do we have?
I think we need the, someone here to talk about it.
Yeah, okay, so then put it on hold and contact the, uh, contact the agent then if you feel that we can't, uh, let's wait till we have somebody here that we can, uh, interface with, unless you wanna go over it.
No, I think we need, uh, some answers.
We did do a site visit on this one as well the same day.
Okay, and you say, and you feel that you need to have the?
Yeah, I think so, I, I, there's.
That's fine.
It's, um.
Put it on hold and make a call.
No sense of going over everything and then have to do it again when, when they're here, so.
Put it on hold and make a call, we can move off to the general permit applications for determination. Final stamp plan review. When you're ready, we have, uh, Susan Baker, twenty-six Benita Road, East Quack, D K R Shores, you have plans for that, right? Pull them up.
It's there.
Yep.
Good?
Okay. Nancy, Thomas A. Anderson, nine Duckwood. Is that?
Wilm, James Wilm, five five, five ninety-nine Meadow Lane, Southampton.
Yeah, that's, that's quick.
You can't.
Yeah.
Say it twice, I'll think of that. Good?
Good.
See?
Vienna Family Reloc, Vocable Trust, one seventy-six A, Bay Avenue East.
Damned, good to go.
Okay, we're good to go.
Good.
Okay.
You're good, Clay.
I'm good?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, good. And go home.
Jeez, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Jimlin Realty Corp., forty-seven Allen Avenue.
Good?
Okay. Very good, thanks, James.
Thank you, James.
Was there one more?
Yeah, there's one more.
Yeah, seven Tanners, Mac.
Yeah.
Seven Tanners, Nick.
Did it go?
Yep.
Great.
You good?
Yep.
Good. All right, busy work session, okay, have a great one.
Side Billy.
You have five minutes.
We, um, Trusty, Clay, you're gonna have to, I guess, let the Cold Spring Pond Trail folks know we'll have to reschedule their discussion.
Yes, yes.
For a later time.
Do you have any conversations with them?
Except that they were on.
You let them know.
Yeah.
All right, cause we put them on right early, so they can plan.
I hope they, not, I hope they don't think it's one o'clock tonight.
It was nine thirty, I believe.
You let them know.
All right, I'll call.
Okay. Um, at this point in time, we, we have executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel litigation, I think what we should do is adjourn this meeting and go into that executive session.
Yeah, plaques, you want me to do?
What?
You want the plaques, do you want me to do plaques?
Oh, no.
Or is that?
I'll, I'll second that, second to Trusty Warner, are we all in favor?
Yep.
All right, aye, okay.